Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Spokane City Council Agenda Review. Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle. Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Great. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Council President. I believe we have one item for briefing today, and that is a councilmember's opponent request on consent item number two, and I think we have Dan Buller here. Special guest, Dan Buller.
I was telling Marlene that I'm fortunate to have known you all by my constant appearances here, but going forward, my replacement, or in a few years when councils change, I won't know any of you because we don't come down here anymore, so.
We could change that if you want to come more.
Okay, we opened a couple of things I'll just say in broad overview. We opened bids today. They came, we had seven bids, which was kind of crazy. From what we're hearing, there's not a ton of work out there. DOT, as we all know, has state funding problems and whatnot, and we're a good 20% under the engineers estimate by a firm that we work with all the time. This project has a wide variety, and on your screen, that looks like the only big enough screen to see, but there's a whole variety of things. We've got sidewalk infill on a block. We've got shared-use path across the park there, multiple crosswalks going into the park, some, those island-style STA shelters where the bus ran, the bike lane is between STA island-style and the sidewalk, kind of like on Riverside downtown here, striped bike lanes the whole way, protected left-turn lanes where there's got the green arrow on Maxwell at Ash, and maple conduit for future rectangular rapid-flashing beacon RRFB at the southeast corner of the park. And then on the bike lanes themselves, they are separated by two lines that are themselves separated from each other by a couple of feet, and then we have periodic concrete, not continuous, but periodic concrete at the start of each block, and then, and then one or two of them in the middle, separating the bike lane from the street such that, you know, if you were intent on driving in the bike lane, you could get between them, but it would be, you know, there was concrete here and there's concrete there, so why would you do that? And I think that's my overview.
Yeah, just follow. Thank you for that. I know we've been talking about this project for a long time, so it's exciting to get going on it, and I think the last design I saw, the concrete barriers were kind of, yeah, at the beginning or end of the intersection, and so, kind of similar to Riverside, and parking is next to it, kind of in the middle of the block? Is that right, where it'd be parking?
Jacobi, that, that thing that I just showed you, would you be able to pull that onto the screen? By the way, if you ever, first of all, if you ever want to see plans, just email me and I'll send you the plans, but all of our plans for all of our projects are at cityofspokaneplans.com, all one word, and you can get them without even having to talk to me.
Nice.
Okay, so, here we are. So the two, the two, is this going to be worthwhile here? Okay, there, on the, on the top of the screen there, you see the, am I able to, can you see the mouse? There we go. So that six feet is the bike lane width, two and a half feet, you see the number right next to the six feet, is the separation. The dash line is the curb and the sidewalk, so we don't have parking there. There's, there's the break right here to get into the driveway. Same thing on the other side. You've got the two and a half foot of separation, six-foot bike lane, and then sidewalk. This happens to be where the infill sidewalk was. Here, for example, is the, the start of the block, the concrete. Here's the concrete over here. Is that getting?
Yeah, that's better.
Scratching your ear?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's better. I was just wanting to make sure there was separation. Thank you.
Okay, adios. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Council President. We just have one matter, council, to consider, and that's tonight's agenda. There's a potential motion to suspend the rules to amend ordinance C-36666. And I'm not sure if I got enough. So I would suggest to Council President to entertain a motion.
Entertaining a motion to suspend the rules?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
For the purposes of adding this, correct, amendment?
The rules have been, all in favor of suspending rules, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions, great. Want to go ahead and speak to the amendment?
Yeah, this amendment adds two parts. One, aware as that we will be the first city in the country to pass an ordinance like this, and then also clarification about online platforms like Indeed, for example, some of the feedback that we got from HR and legal.
Is there a motion to adopt the amendment?
I'll make a motion to adopt the amendment for tonight.
Second?
I'm sorry, who's the second? Second, oh, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Bingle, comment?
Yeah, are all the sponsors good with the change?
Yes.
All right, cool.
All right, all those in favor of adopting the amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions, that is amended.
All right, I actually want to jump in and make a motion here as well. I'd like to make a motion to defer ordinances C-36663, 64, and 65 for three weeks to get some more information on, on them.
Second?
Yeah, I just want to speak to it. So we've, we've got some concerns, and by we, you know, looking through this, some of the language is, is about things that can be done in the future. This is a little bit of a preapproval, in my understanding, and I want to be able to correct that. You know, we're talking about $112 million worth of bonds being issued. Those are things that I think we, as a body, should look at and see the final details and the final terms before we approve them, rather than something where it's like, if interest rates were to drop in the future, should we do this? I also am pretty opposed to us extending the term on our debt. I think that we should be. Kate, would you like to come on up and, and speak on this? Sorry. I may have misunderstood something here.
Yeah, so I just, Matt dropped by, our CFO, dropped by, and he clarified to me that this would, his intention is not to extend the issuance of any, the terms of any of the bonds, that this really is simply the option to refinance in the event, the unlikely event, that interest rates fall. And I was going back through the notes from the presentation that day. There are really nice parameters around the circumstances under which we would take advantage of a refinancing option, and it would be like a 3% savings overall. So I'm reassured by a lot of what our CFO says, but it's, it's, his intention is not to extend the financing period.
And I appreciate the intention, but is it written into the language that that could happen?
I don't think that, these, these bonds have coupon dates where they are far enough out that I don't think that that's, I don't have all my materials with me here, but I don't think that that's an issue, because these are like 2027 and beyond.
Okay, I guess I would open it up to the rest, because I talked to a number of council members who felt like they weren't also adequately, yeah, briefed on this, and so happy to withdraw the motion if everybody else feels comfortable with it, and Matt just walked in. Matt, do you want to come talk on this?
I don't know what the questions are that were asked. Sorry, I popped out of another meeting, but it sounds like there's a couple of questions, so happy to answer them.
Yes, perfect. So I have a question. So I just heard that it's not your intention to extend the term. Is that something that is still possible in this?
No, we can't, because it's a, it's a, it was a, it was a publicly voted bond, so you can't change the terms of the bond.
Right, okay. But you can refinance them to change the interest rate?
Yep, they're a callable bond, so when they are callable, you can, you can sell them off and refinance them within the same term, based on what the interest rates are today. So it's, it's market contingent, obviously with, and I'm sure Kate probably mentioned this, but obviously, we're, with where the interest rates are now, it's, it's not advantageous for the city, but with the leeway within the year, we're hoping that with this resolution, we have the ability to pull the trigger once the, the conditions are right.
Okay, so I guess I'm, I'm concerned, it's not a resolution, it's an ordinance.
I'm sorry, an ordinance. I apologize, sorry.
Yeah. Okay, so we're not going to be extending the terminal, but we may be able to get more favorable rates when it comes to interest rates.
Yeah, so generally, rule of thumb, the, the interest rate that I, that I am aiming for is about 3%. For most of those, the net present value of those bonds that we're looking at right now, with a 3% would, would equate to multimillion-dollar savings for the net present value of that savings. Obviously, it's over the life of the, the, the bond itself. We're not there right now. Last we checked, a month ago, when Scott Bauer is here and presented it to you all, was about just shy of 2% for two of them, and then, I believe it was the wastewater one was just above, just above 0%, so, I mean, completely out of the question. When we looked, when we started this process, when the bonds were callable in late September, they were spiking above 3%. It's really just trying to find that sweet spot of where the actual rates are, and then pulling the trigger to, to sell those bonds off and refinance them.
So Matt, the cost of refinancing and what we might save, what's the delta like? If it's going to cost me $100 to refi, and then the cost to refi is $100, are we like revenue neutral?
No, 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 no. No, no, no. So all of the, the net present value savings that I'm, that I'm trying to identify are all net of the, the cost of the refinancing of the debt. So, again, going back to the sweet spot of 3%, but likely 2% is where I'm at for a minimum, maybe 1.5%, depending on what happens over the next few months. It, it will net out to a net present value savings of likely above $1 million in every case of this. And so that's for parks, wastewater, and, gosh, I can't remember the last one on, on the top of my head.
So, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, and also, could you just kind of speak to the timeliness of this as well?
The timing?
The timeliness.
It really, I mean, it's not absolutely urgent. Based on what happened last week with, with the rates, we saw a spike of 100-plus basis points, so we went in the wrong direction, based on what happened and the news that came out of DC. The municipal bond market spiked the other direction, which wasn't advantageous for us in, in any sense of the, the fashion. So the timeliness of it is, is really to kind of catch the sweet spot. I can't, again, based on what's been happening in DC, can't say heads or tails of when it'll be in a good spot for us, but it's been spiking back and forth over the last several weeks. So I'd like to get it as soon as possible, just so that I have the ability to capture as many, as much of the savings as I can, based on the, the information that I have.
Any other questions for Matt? Councilmember Bingle?
I guess I have a question for the dice. If everybody feels comfortable, then I can withdraw my motion, so.
But just thank you for bringing it up. I felt like it was important to get these questions addressed, and thank you, Matt, for coming down and answering.
Can I withdraw my motion, Chris?
It takes a vote, or unanimous consent, one of the two.
Is it unanimous consent to withdraw? Unanimous consent to withdraw the motion?
Sure.
Anybody aye? All right, that is withdrawn.
All right.
Thank you.
Council President, there probably is one more item, back to ordinance C-36666. I don't know if Councilmember Dillon is interested in a motion to suspend a rule that would require automatic one-week deferral. Because you adopted an amendment that was, that came in late, it's supposed to be deferred by one week.
I'll make a motion to suspend the automatic one-week deferral with the amendment.
I'll second.
So moving to second to suspend the rules, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions, the rules are suspended?
I guess I'll make the motion to add this onto the agenda without the one-week requirement.
Second.
I'd like to ask why, what difference would one week make if we don't follow our own process? Just, I'm curious how that would play out.
Yeah, I think that this is a fairly minor amendment. This ordinance has been, I think, very publicly vetted. Stakeholders are well aware of the amendment. We've been considering this ordinance in some permutation over the last six months, so it is a very, I think, minor, minor change.
Any other council commentary?
I think that's a fair point, though. Like, normally wouldn't be a good idea, because if, if it's a big change, then we want more community feedback, but I feel like with this one, it's unlikely to change, so.
Councilmembers Oppone?
Yeah, I think for the public to understand, I know this is a new rule for us. I think we need to operationalize it as a council probably more for consistency, so the public knows what to expect, and we know what to expect, because what determines that is hard to interpret.
Fair.
I'll support it today, but I think we need a, a reset of a new rule.
Any other council commentary? So there is a motion and a second to add it to tonight's agenda, to suspend the one-week requirement. All those in favor, am I quoting this right, Mr. Wright? Am I quoting this right, Mr. Wright? The one week, to omit the one-week suspension due to the change to the ordinance. All those in favor of omitting the one-week requirement, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Noes? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Councilmember McCattar?
Yeah, Council President, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of advancing C-36679 to the April 28th agenda as a final reading ordinance.
I'll second.
Motion and a second? I'm sorry, I don't even have that one in front of me.
Which is that one?
That is the reimplementation of the Proposition 1 language.
There's a motion and a second to suspend the rules for the purpose of advancing this to first reading.
To, to final, final reading next Monday.
To final reading, I'm sorry, to final reading.
I'll, I'll speak to this real quick. So, I mean, obviously, we all know that the Supreme Court last week overturned the decision on the procedural grounds that Prop 1 didn't go through the right procedure, it was administrative and not legislative, and so Prop 1, which was overwhelmingly adopted by the City of Spokane, was, was overturned in essence, and so this would give the ability for the people to be heard from us and to implement that councilmanically, if it is administrative, which, love to have an argument about that, but if it is administrative, then we should implement this.
Councilman Klitsky, now come back to Councilman McCattar.
I think this is a pretty big one, and I would be in favor of following our process on this. I know that the day after that was repealed or overturned, I met with my precinct captain and I said, what would, what would you do if you were able to write this law, if we had to do it over again? And he's like, before I give you any feedback on that, I think we should all meet as captains with the chief and make a recommendation. And so I did agree to recommend that to the chief and the administration, and that is happening tomorrow, but I would like to really be able to hear feedback from them and draft something that really works and possibly has a broader scope, so I would not be in favor of just throwing this on the agenda right away.
Councilman McCattar?
Yeah, and I completely hear that and respect that, and in fact, I've got a, another ordinance that is much more expansive than this, but I feel like we are at a, at a point in time where the public has come to expect that this law is on the books, 75%. I think darn near 80% of my constituents voted for this, and to not, I think, reimplement, when we have the power to do so, is disrespectful to them and the will of the people there. I'm totally open to changes that would broaden the scope and allow for additional considerations, but I think that there, I don't think that there is any reason that we can't put this back into place while we debate those other changes. To simply leave this, I think, open is going to cause a lot of consternation for the citizenry, and there's already, I think, a lot of misinformation that's flowing around about this, or perceptions as to what law enforcement can even do. I'm hearing from constituents with concerns in their neighborhoods, and law enforcement is telling them that with Prop 1 gone, their options are incredibly limited with what they are able to respond with, and so let's not leave anything to, to the imagination. Let's just put it right back in code, and then we can go to debate expansive changes beyond that.
Any other council commentary? Councilmember Dillon?
Definitely hear all those arguments, I think, and, you know, understand the popularity of the law. I think in this instance, there's just some of the principle of the matter, perhaps, over popularity, and I know that that in itself is not the most popular argument, but there is some mechanic, mechanical and logistical questions that I still have, particularly with people's belongings. You know, there's still litigation that's kind of hovering around that as it relates to our camping ordinance, so I think if we can point in the direction that we are solving those, there's still questions that arise with Prop 1, for example, if, you know, police officers are supposed to take out measuring tape, and what happens if someone is 1,050 feet from a daycare, school, or park? And I also heard too, you know, when this decision came down, like, oh, well, now we're going to have, you know, all these, these tents and parks, and camping is already illegal in parks, and so I think there's a little bit more of an educational component that residents can expect, that calls are being responded to, that laws are being implemented. I definitely understand the argument that people want to see this be turnkey, but my interpretation of the court, too, is that, you know, there is, this is a legislative decision, it does rest with us, and I think that we can get something moving here very quickly, and would just love to see this go through its committee process, and for us to collaborate and come up with something that works.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I would say if there are changes we want to make, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, like Councilmember Cathcart said, I think I'm up to the, to the conversation. You know, I've heard some of them in the community are, are, you know, even interested in opening it up, do we have to send people to community court, is, is some feedback that I've heard, too. And I think that that's all, you know, fair game for us. I think what would make most sense to me is implement it the way that people asked for it, and then if there are changes we want to make, then we go back and we make those changes, because that's still within our legislative purview, but it gives the people what they've asked for. Then we can have the community conversation on, how do we want to change it now that we can change it, because before we couldn't change it for three years? And maybe we find out people want to expand it, or maybe they want to contract it, or whatever it is, but give the people what they asked for first, and then after that, we can go through and make some changes. We just spent a ton of time on different ordinances to implement, you know, that were pertaining to homelessness, or, you know, generally applicable laws, as they were, and I think we could go through a similar process, because Prop 1, I'm assuming for everybody else, is a, is a pretty hot topic of conversation at neighborhood councils, or, you know, different business groups, and so I think the prudent thing for us would be to adopt it ASAP, and then go through the process of what are the things that could make it better, because maybe the people voted for it because it was the best option that they were given, and maybe there's a, there's a variation of it that's, that's better for everybody, and I think that that's fair game, and we can, we can have a broader community conversation that way, but start off with implementing it.
Well, I will say, there's been confusion around Prop 1 since it was voted in with the other various camping laws. We can legislate it, but I like to hear from Chief Hall, because they, he would have to be the one to implement whatever we do, and how does that look? And it just happened last week, and I know there's a lot of chatter around it, but I think we deserve to give the chief a little bit of time to come to us with his officers when he staffs that, to see what that would look like realistically and sustainably around Prop 1 and all the issues that surround it. So I would not be in favor of advancing it to first reading next week. So there's a motion on the floor to advance to first reading, to suspend the rules and advance to first reading next week.
Council President, this is the ordinance that was circulated at 12:58 today. I didn't have a number associated with it, so.
Shay got it, so.
Yeah, and really, I think some of us got it, but hadn't really had a chance to even review it, betwixt now and then. Councilmember McCattar?
Well, just, just to be fair, I think we've all reviewed it many, 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 many times over the last two years, so it's, it's the exact same language, not a, not a punctuation mark or a letter difference, it's the exact same thing that the voters approved, so just to make that clear for everybody watching.
So the vote on the floor is to suspend the rules and add it to first reading. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes?
No.
Abstentions? That does not pass.
I think we have one more matter, council, and that would be approving the updated draft agenda as next week's final agenda.
Motion to approve the updated agenda?
So move.
Second.
Moving to second, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions, that is approved. We are in recess until 6:00 PM. Thank you.